Okay.
Okay, good.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the City of Twin Oaks Board of Alderman Meeting for May the 21st, 2025. Please stand up for pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, the two republic, original citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Paul Rowe, please.
Alderman Eisenhower, here.
Alderman Crusen, here.
Alderman Stokel, here.
Alderman Crawford, here.
Mayor Fortune, here.
We have an agenda posted for tonight's meeting. If there are no changes to the agenda, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have citizen comments. I notice we have some citizens with us tonight. Would you like to comment at this time?
Okay. Yes, I would. My comment is in the form of a complaint. My neighbors at 66 and 70, which apparently is supposed to be under construction, is a mess, and there is no effort at all to cut the grass. It is now this high on both properties, and when I contacted April, who has been very helpful to me with this, and this is after several phone calls. I've been trying to be quiet and stay out of it.
Sure.
There's been illegal dumping, his fences up against statues, and I just find it amazing that we are allowing him basically to laugh at Twin Oaks. That's what he's doing. He is completely ignoring every law. When I talked to April, she said it's turned over, and we have the same codes that St. Louis County has. Why are they not being enforced? Why do I have to look at this grass get this high and nothing is being done? You have a ravine going down to your park, which I'm sure, I have no definite positive information about this, but I'm sure it's causing water problems to your park. And now there's a pool of water standing there. Masteo season is upon us, people. When are we? I had friends come over, I'm sorry, this is disjointed, but I didn't really plan on this. I had friends come over and they said, "Holy God, what's going on next door?" I said, "Nobody seems to know." More importantly, nobody seems to care. They said to me, "That couldn't happen in Wildwood." Apparently, we are at the other end of the spectrum, folks. They are laughing at us and our... It just absolutely blows me away. I appreciate all of your efforts. I really do. And I know it's hard, and I know he's ignoring you, but let's put some teeth in this stuff. Let's get some action. Can we just afford to keep, because it's on the other side of the street? This is still a residential area. I've driven by lots and lots of construction sites, and they still maintain it so that it is presentable. I can't afford to plant any more trees. I've got practically a damn forest now. I keep planting them and praying they'll grow fast. Okay, I've said enough. I really hope you take some action pretty soon. Paul, I tried to, I tried to reach you about this, just to ask for some definitions, and I was told I should come tonight because I can't make a direct call to you. I would at this time like to request that I get names and phone numbers at St. Louis County. I've called, and you get a bunch of people who say, "Yes." Tim Beaver is the man I talked to. He planned Twin Oaks for everything. I knew what Twin Oaks says. Called April. April said, "No, no, no, that's not exactly how it works here." I don't care how it works, I just think something should be done. It's been years, and he is breaking the law. I've probably taken too much time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if Karen mentioned, I think she touched base with April's comment about, county said, "Well, Twin Oaks has to decide that, what to do about it and enforce it." And as I look, and I don't want to talk politics, because that's a lose-lose situation. You run it all the way up the ladder, and what does this remind you of, what you see on the news every night? Pass the button, somebody else did it, bad mouthed, different people's names. Your folks are lucky right now that we are not planning an immediate move, because if we did, if we were, other than not having any idea where we moved to, when that day comes, we're gonna lose our ass on that house because of the situation. And you're all welcome to take a look at our house. We've done everything inside it, outside of it, and around it that would stand tall to anybody's standards, only to be adjacent to a lot that was purchased 18 months ago. We've seen nothing but destruction. The house that was on it, a brick house, was tore down. All the trees except one. And this is a whole personal shot I've got. I love trees, I love what they represent, and unfortunately, somebody else has the adverse opinion about what good are trees, or just in the way. We leave it wide open. I'm not gonna keep going, I could go until midnight on this situation, but if we had to sell our house right now, I'm sure that there is a figure that this adjacency would cost us in terms of dollars and cents on the sale value of our home. And it's a friggin' shame that Karen mentioned somebody's laughing at us, the neighbors are laughing at us, they're laughing at you, because you're the ones that said, "These are rules, these are laws, they have to be enforced." Oh, yeah, I'm right. So I hope you take it personally, because you're the persons that need to get some teeth into it. Make up your mind whether you're gonna decide or county's gonna decide, but for God's sakes, somebody decide what rules we have to abide by and which ones we can somewhere knows that. Well, I thought maybe John was wrong, he doesn't like to hear that kind of stuff. But you get my point. Thanks for your time.
Well, I would, I would just say that I understand your frustration. I think we're all as frustrated as you are in trying to deal, in trying to deal with this. I'm not sure if the person that you talked to at county was the right person you're supposed to be talking to, because in our case, when we're trying to deal with this, with county code enforcement, we get bounced around from person to person, and yeah, you do, you get, "Well, you should go over here." "Well, they're dumping illegally." "Oh, well, that's a different department, you have to talk to them." So I can tell you right now that we are doing everything that we can legally, and that right now there is a legal process in place, and that legal process unfortunately has timeframes on it that we have to follow. So I hope as well as you do that this situation gets cleared up as soon as possible.
If I may?
Yep.
I don't want to interrupt you, but could we at least take care of the grass being so high?
There is a stop work order on that property.
Does that mean you can't maintain it?
Okay, and I don't know, I would say that, yeah, we should be able to make them cut the grass.
You gotta brush your hair.
Yeah, we can do that.
Cut the grass.
Yeah, we can deal with that.
I got a, I took a little movie that showed the grass blowing in the wind, so it's not like it's little short stuff. Even if you just took a weed whacker to the worst of it, I would just say, I've been quiet all this time.
Yeah.
Well, so...
That would indicate some source of sense of obligation and concern and pride in what they have that's non-existent right now. But if there's some, you know, stop work doesn't mean ignore everything.
So we appreciate your efforts, but I'm just saying, Celine needs to get teeth. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Paul?
Good evening. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to extend my appreciation. A year or so ago, the board made a change so that the citizens could talk at the beginning of the meeting and after the meeting, and I really appreciate that, having taken advantage of it in the past. But I just want to talk a little bit about, well, first of all, Karen, I haven't been by the site. I know what it looks like. Haven't been by it in two months, but everybody uses the word "grass." Is it really grass, or is it weeds?
Mud and weeds, yeah.
Okay. Bowling, we're gonna start work there. The condition, you drive in Bowley right now on the west side, is terrible. Nobody is maintaining it. I don't know how far the rideaway goes for the village. I don't know anything about the property owner. I know a little bit about the property ownership, because I was on the board at the time when we did the rezoning, but I would encourage all of you to consider that that's the poorest maintained entrance to any approach residential areas within the city of Twin Oaks. It's terrible. Ever since I've lived here, there's grapevines growing in trees all across the top, and nobody's maintaining it. This is bad. Let's go out and buy a chunk of land that goes like about 10 feet past that first pine tree there, and let's maintain it as a proper entrance.
The property, where the, actually part of Bowley entrance is built on the property of that first house.
What are you doing about it before you're doing the work there, anything?
Yeah, and you know where the wall is?
Yeah.
Okay, that is actually the property of that house, and we had to get permission to rebuild that wall. So all of that property is owned by that homeowner. It should be maintained.
I want you to go out and buy it.
I heard you, yeah.
I mean, it's dead property, both of those homeowners, the way it's configured right now, so I really want you to spend some of the city's money and go out and do something.
That's something that we can look into, yeah.
I'm sorry?
We can certainly look into that, yeah.
I think that's the main...
And I agree with you as far as the maintenance of that property right there with the honeysuckle and whatever else is growing in there.
Yeah.
You know, we've gone in there a couple times and cut it. The guy in the house is not too happy when we do that, but he should be maintaining that.
Is there ever a reason to go and condemn something there? That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Board of Alderman, regular meeting minutes for May the 7th, and a bill's list from May the 3rd to May the 16th. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Report of committees, financial report, Dave?
Good evening. So we have a report for, the four months ended April 30th, 2025, for this fiscal year, 2025. And you see on the balance sheet, which is a snapshot of our assets liabilities, fund balances at the end of that, April 30th, diverted the way through the fiscal year. I think what's noteworthy, obviously it's still in pretty good financial shape, that if you take the cash in the certificate of positive, which is our liquid assets, those total two million, $272,000, that's about $300,000 more than we had a year ago. Obviously, we're gonna be spending some money, especially capital improvements here in the coming months. Still, in very good position with fund balances totally almost 2.7 million dollars. Now, the next stage, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and change in fund balances. We've brought in $621,000 in the last four months, and spent about $415,000. If you look at the expenditures, I'll get to the revenues, which of course is sales tax oriented, but the expenditures, we're seeing in the categories we have of administration, pretty much the same level of expenditure so far this year as last year, even though some accounts made, line items may be a little different, and there's a variance from year to year. Police, the contract is pretty much as expected, the 4.1% increase from what we spent last year. Parks is up, I'm sorry, down about 23%. That's because we did a lot of landscaping, about $10,000 landscaping a year ago, and not done any so far this year, at least on patroning. And the road expenditures are down, and that's because we kind of reallocated the roads to, the labor costs to parks and administration was building, so that's why we're seeing variance there. The resident services are up about 7%, and that's almost entirely due to an increased cost in snow and ice removal from 2024. We spent, we spent about $22,000 in snow removal so far this year, and last year at this time was about $16,000, so that's why that number is up. And at the bottom, you can see a graph that shows, just the operating expenditures. We didn't take, we kept the capital and debt service out of this pie chart to show that operating expenditures so far, we spent 47% of our operating expenditures on the administrative areas, which is pretty much as we expected. The next page is the sales tax numbers, and it's starting to level off, because we had some very high numbers in February, but still very healthy numbers. We're up 25% from a year ago in sales tax. And we have a breakdown there. That will continue to level off. May's, May's numbers are a little bit higher than May of last year, but they're not at the 25% level of increase, so it's gonna start leveling off as we would expect. The, and then the last page is the budget. We are certainly right on the budget, having gone through 33% of the year, but we, our expenditures kind of vary depending on capital improvements, so we've only spent about 25% so far, which again is expected. We'll point out one thing, the sales tax budget, budgeted number for 2025 is 1,375,000 total of all the funds. Last year, we received over 1.5 million. So I don't expect to get quite 1.5 because of the distribution variance that we always have to deal with, but still, very confident that the numbers we have for revenues, i.e. what we have in for sales tax, are very good numbers, very achievable. Our expenditures, we're gonna need to adjust some things to the capital improvements, and I know there's a roof cost that's gonna be talked about tonight. So the budget's in good order, and things are flowing as expected. Any questions? Thank you.
What was the date for the capital meeting?
June 24th.
We're gonna have a special meeting to, kind of mid-year, to look at our capital expenditures that we've made so far, those that we would like to plan out by the end of the year, maybe make some adjustments to it.
I will be in Germany that week.
Oh, well...
The week of the 25th? The week of the 22nd. Okay. Yeah, I actually go for the, yeah, on the 23rd through the 3rd, through the 1st.
We can, we can adjust it to another, I'd like to have everybody here.
Okay, that's why I wasn't sure, because I'm like, I don't have to be here.
I'd like to have everybody here.
It's not like we're making actual decisions, so...
So we'll come up with another, another day.
Okay, we're gonna do a lunch, if that works for everybody, a lunch meeting. Yeah, we'll figure out something else. Sorry.
We'll let you know, Dave, when that is.
Okay. Should be allowed.
Okay, park committee report, I see I'm giving the park committee report tonight?
Yes.
Okay. We have movie night coming up, that's on the 30th, and there's gonna be an ice cream truck.
Yeah, Lily's Cafe will be there, the desserts, and the model desserts range from $2 to $7 for the snacks, so should satisfy everybody. Sweet, too, and encouraging people to come down, and it's gonna be the sandbox.
30th.
It's a good fun baseball, kid movie, kid-friendly movie, so we're hoping that anybody comes out for 30th.
What is the start time on it?
7 o'clock is when we have it, but it's gonna be when...
Right, the movie will start when it gets dark.
When it gets dark, so that's, yeah. And Lily's will be down at 6:30 until morning.
Have they been informed? I am just speaking from last time, that there should be one person directing them to start the movie, because there was, there was, the crowd was getting a little out of control last time.
Anxious?
They were getting anxious, and they started moving because the crowd...
Well, there's gonna be a debate going on.
So, yeah, they need to understand that, they get direction from one person.
And that's Paula.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say it should be Joe.
We shall wait. Okay, yeah, that's a good idea.
It just, it started early, and it was too late, and...
Yeah, yeah.
All of the contracts for the bands, for the concerts are done?
All the bands, we have contracts for all of them through August, and we also went looking at one for a family fun day, but working on deciding what supplies we're gonna get from the gang world, and we're gonna be deciding that for the next, for the next meeting. And then we went over, we did redo the harbor day, which went very well. It was attended by the Twin Oaks School Davies, Representative, it's a Greg?
Greg, yeah.
Greg, yeah. He was the one that did the presentation to the students and answered the questions, and was very engaged. The park committee did a great job of coming down, grilling the hot dogs, and serving the kids, so it turned out to get, it was a beautiful day. It was right in between all the rains that we've been having, so it was perfect. Been planted a new tree over by the, close to the, to the pavilion.
Kind of tagging on to that, about a week later, they invited me over to the classroom to talk about government. It was their, it was their government study week, I guess, and Deb Lavender, I invited Deb Lavender to attend with me, ex-representative, to kind of talk about local government, state government, and very, very good questions from the kids. Each of them sent me a thank you letter, which I'll bring in, and we'll find a board to put them up somewhere, but it was a very good time.
Could I comment about the harbor?
Yeah.
I've been physically incapacitated from getting down there right through, so me and my buddy, we got back down there again to pull this up, start with the project, a landfill, looking the bottom up, and when I got down there, looked around and took a walk, absolutely impressed.
Well, I think, you know, Jake is, Jake is new on the job, and he hit the ground running, and I think he's doing, doing an excellent job, and there's a lot of work to do, which he loves, so he'll get around to it all, but he's been doing a really good job for us, and thank you for saying that. We have new business.
It's kind of new and old, we'll call it that.
New and old concerning the, I don't know how many storms ago this was, but we had roof damage back in the fall, I guess.
No, it was May of last year.
Was it May?
Yeah, it was like a year ago.
A year ago, okay.
Yeah, it was Memorial Day weekend, you're right, not quite a year ago, so...
Memorial Day weekend, yeah.
Yeah. So since we, I guess I'll take this.
Yeah, go ahead.
Since we went kind of back and forth with that, many contractors, and then the one that really felt like we needed a lot more work than we all felt, and I was in touch with BFA about that, and so I sort of, once Jake started, had him kind of go back to the drawing board and reach out to some of these. He had a roofing contractor that he reached out to, he also reached out to the one that was, that put on the roof originally. So after vetting a few of the contractors, Jake had been meeting with them and talking with them, they were all kind of in line with what they thought the damage was, and so Jake recommends, and I agree, that we go with Martin and Sons, who are the ones who put the roof on this building to begin with, so they had given us a bid to do the repairs here needed at City Hall, the repairs at the Bell House as well. So basically, we'll have, you know, a contract and an ordinance after we connect them with the insurance, to then work out sort of what the discrepancies are between what the insurance has already given us and the supplemental will be, but we just wanted to have that in front of you guys tonight for approval for Jake to move forward with Martin, and we'll get them together on the insurance and hopefully get this scheduled and done and off of the books for now.
Yeah.
So, so that's what you're to consider. If you have any questions about it or anything, please ask.
Were they here before for a presentation?
No, Martin never came in, no. They came and they did give us a bid originally. We did have an original bid, which I think that they honored the original bid they gave us, and then also finished out with the bidding over at the Bell House that they hadn't done. Yeah, exactly, so...
And the bid is still good?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I think you've...
I talked to him a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, Jake's been in contact.
Basically doing this, the shimo roof on this building.
Right.
And then the shimo roof on building on their siding, which is soft and some...
Yeah.
Yeah, which is what originally was in the estimate from the insurance, was, yeah, they were recommending that we obviously fix the shingles here, and they didn't mention anything about all that TPO and coping and all the things that the other, yeah, the other one brought up.
Just, just so you know, we had, when this happened, we had these roofers come in, and we were anywhere from the bid that you see that we're accepting here, which is a rather minimal bid in my estimation, to we need to tear the roof off and redesign it because it's designed wrong.
Over $90,000 here, for just here, so...
So we've talked to enough roofers to know now that the design isn't really all that bad, and we can go ahead with the repair work, so what we're looking for is a motion to move forward with the Martin, is it?
Yeah, Martin and Sons, which is the original installers here at City Hall.
Yeah, motion to move forward with Martin and Sons.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move forward with that. Next, we have engineering consulting services. You want to take that one?
Yeah, I mean, really, Joe, I know you wanted to talk about this, so I'll kind of let you lead on that, what questions that you had.
Yeah, really, the main question is centered around the estimating that we're getting out of their, out of BFA's services. You know, we talked about doing the, redoing the road down to the park, and my recollection was we tabled it for a while because of cost, but we've seen some of their costs way overestimated, and I don't know what the solution is, if we need to go find maybe a separate estimating service, and they're out there, to help us through that, or do we look at possibly going to some design-build services, which I'm a big fan of, because I come from the design-build home. But I just, I think we need to take a hard look at this, because I don't think that they're giving us the tools that we need to make proper decisions to move forward with some of these capital improvements.
I think, I think in talking to you, BFA, we've had BFA for many years, and even when we were posing this building here, the preliminary work that they do for us to decide, yeah, do we, do we want to go out for bids, you know, and get hard numbers or not, really those numbers come from BFA to start out with, and they give us projections, and we've seen that they're pretty conservative on their projections. They don't want to underbid it, but sometimes they maybe go a little bit too far over the top, and your concern, if I understand you're right, is that if we get that initial bid from them and it is way overpriced, we may decide not to do the project, and then later find out it would have come in at a much lower cost than we should have done, right?
Yes. And that, that is, typically, engineering firms are overpriced. There's other ways that we could attack that, or, or you ask them to go find... There's other ways that we could attack that, or, or you ask them to go find that estimating service. To where you get a real estimate of what that cost could be.
That's something that we can talk to BFA about. I, you know, we can, we can talk to Ray Frankenberg and say, hey, look, this is becoming a topic with our board that based on history, we've seen that while you're always not underbidding these projects, sometimes we're questioning the amount of discretion that you're putting in there. And we're putting the project on the side because we don't think at this point in time we can afford it. Can you sharpen those numbers and, you know, we, history has shown us that you're usually pretty much over what the bids come in at. Is there something from your end that you can do to tighten that up? Or do we need to look at another engineering firm that we feel more comfortable with? Or we certainly, you know, we're not tied to BFA on all this. We can, we can go out and try other engineering firms on some of these projects.
And aren't we using a different one for?
We are, for the Merrimack Station grant, yes.
We'll get a little peek into that as well, which of course is purposely overbid, you know what I mean, like you want that to be as
That one is, yeah.
As possible, sure, but I, you know, I would agree that we, I mean, even if you just look at the Bolley entrance, right?
Right.
Like if we went back five years, what, what did that entrance cost? It was forty or sixty or some, I mean, it was like a number where we're like, oh, we just can't do it. We all just walked away and then more complaints and a few years later and we went and did all the work again.
Yep.
I mean, if we will, we've spent in engineering costs, whatever we'll spend on that right now.
Yeah.
For sure, a hundred percent, no question. So it's also, you know, I wonder about things like design build or having, you know, some piece of that, uh, process in there. Even if it's better access for us to things that we have asked about before, right? Which is hard for us to get it because we don't really, you know, haven't tracked that so well. I think you guys have done better in the last, I'd say since Frank, four weeks, I think you guys have done a better job, but I mean, I feel like we asked some of these questions over and over and over again and it sort of almost depends on the way that we ask it forward, you know, I mean, I remember asking about sidewalks in Autumn Leaf and basically being told it's a million and a half. So that we just wouldn't do it. And I was like, but if we told you we wanted to do it, what would it cost?
Yeah, right.
You know, so, yeah, I, I, I feel like it's, it's a problem and probably one worth discussing maybe at the capital meeting where we just sort of talk about what are the other options? Because I don't know enough about design build, but it sounds like you do. And could give us a little more information about.
Well, we have some engineering expertise now.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm saying, like, you know, maybe we broaden our horizons a little bit and that. And I think our experience, you know, potentially with whoever the other people are.
GBA.
Do you think if, I was like, it's other letters, um.
And they've done work for the city in the past, like a decade, fifteen years ago, so I think they've done a lot of engineering for us.
And they have, one time, yeah. Exactly. Yeah, and they do a lot of stuff across other cities, so, um, I think will be another experience that we can use to, you know, look at as well, so. I think it's worth.
But I think, I think we've had enough history with BFA to where we could go back and track their estimates versus their actual, their actual bill at the end of the project and then see, see how they come in. Do you have a feel for, for how far off they are or?
Well, I know that the, um, the fix at, was it ninety-eight? Was three times what it actually came in at? And I don't know what the, I don't know what the, um.
And I think that was due
Stormwater project was.
To the difference, that particular one was due to the difference in what we would have to do as the city fixing that in terms of being able to spot grade it and do all the things to make sure that that trailer worked versus what a homeowner can do and just say, trust what the contractor says and, and that's better and I like it, that's fine. So that was part of that, for sure. But I know if you want an example, Bolley entrance, they came in at eighty-six and the bid was fifty-nine, so that's a good.
About fifty percent.
So about, yeah, yeah, about forty.
Yeah.
Somewhere forty.
And they do add thirty percent contingency on every single estimate that they give us.
Yeah, they have a big contingency. I've argued about that before.
The numbers already add contingency and then they add.
And then they add. Right, so that is something to know. And I don't know if that's standard across all.
It's usually what engineers.
Yeah.
What I, what I don't want to have happen is we do nothing and then they bid us another project and we see that it's eighty thousand and we're going, oh, well, we, we really know it's only fifty and then it comes in at eighty thousand.
Yes.
Yeah, we don't want that.
And Kim, as Tim says, can we go back and do some analysis on past projects?
Sure.
Come up with half a dozen.
We talked before about asking BFA to give us better documentation and I, I think they did that, didn't they?
And I think in, in fairness to BFA, sometimes, and I'm not saying all these projects, but sometimes we'll go to them with a project and they'll come back with an estimated cost. And then we'll table it for a while and then we'll go back to the project and then we'll say, well, we wouldn't have to do this, we can do that. We kind of changed the scope a little bit. And then they modify the, the thing and then we come back a little bit later and say, change the scope again. And then we get, we get it to a figure that we're comfortable with, which we really would have liked to have been at that number to start with. So maybe part of it's on us, I don't know, that we're not being as clear as we should be about exactly what's, what's the minimum that we want on this.
I, I definitely think that that happens, you know, that we, we don't know what we want when we walk in and start asking questions. And therefore we're sort of saying, and that's why I wonder, not knowing anything about how design build actually works. But I would think that that is more around they're helping you figure out how to do a project as opposed to you coming in and saying, we want this done. And so they go and put specs to that, even though they're going, no, you don't. Right, I'm doing what the customer says, I'm, I'm doing this, even though I would tell you not to do X. And then we come back and in their discussion, there's this little thing over here that makes sense and we, so we change our minds. Well, that is starting over and I don't think that we give enough credit to changing scope, right? That's a new project.
Yeah.
And therefore you just threw away that money.
Yeah.
On the first project. And yes, pieces of it are kept, but for the most part, you're starting over. So I, I do think it's about being more diligent on our end on when we actually want something and what that something is. Which I would, I would entirely be curious as to whether or not these other companies that do it from a different perspective help you figure out what works best in that space, you know, I'm thinking of like the lady who came in and helped me design the kitchen, right? All I knew is that I needed cabinets and a island and, you know, like, I don't know what I'm doing.
Right.
So I have a person who comes in and then the numbers come out. Right, like, and I tell them, I want to be around this range of number. And this is kind of what I'm hoping to get out of it. And then they help figure out how to make that work as opposed to saying, I want something, nobody knows what it costs and they go out and decide, you know, here's what that looks like and here's what it'll cost. And then you start making changes, which is just gonna cost you more.
And the add-ons always cost us too.
Oh, gosh, yes.
The add-ons kill us.
Yeah. And there can be different design approaches for a project. For example, on the stormwater project, maybe you're putting in a storm drain and you're running it down, down a ravine or you're running a straight pipe.
Yeah, or you want to go under because you want it to be.
I would like to see those options up front. You know, with, okay, here's alternate A and here's alternate B, you know, if you want to spend more money here, C and so forth, yeah.
They do that when we ask them, but we don't often ask them to do that, so. A good example is the Hartzog Lane, redoing the park access road. They did give us lots of alternatives though, they gave us the sidewalk, the widening. But it wasn't until we specifically asked for those things, you know.
Agreed.
Yeah.
But the options we got initially were really expensive. They were like a million dollar.
Right, if we wanted to do it all, yeah.
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 Well, we know we don't want to do that. Okay, anything else on that subject? Maybe, maybe we could look at, maybe we could look at the history.
Okay.
I can certainly talk to BFA or we can, we, we've kind of started this process of using some other engineering firms to see how they work. I suggest we continue doing that. GBA is certainly a good company and we've used them before. I can have a non-confrontational discussion with BFA and say, you know, I'm a little bit concerned about this and, and I'll just kind of present it like, see what they say.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's a confrontation issue.
Yeah.
It's just a concern.
I've had a confrontational issue with Ray before on his thirty percent
Contingency.
reserves, you know. Okay. Attorney's report, Paul?
No report tonight.
Jake, you have a public works report?
Nice seeing everyone tonight. So, uh, public works, maintenance updates in the park, uh, we've been doing landscaping around Comfort Station, Mulch, uh, Autumn Leaf entrance. Uh, the intersection, we got a lot of that stuff. Got all the dirt brought in and thrown in the middle of the intersection. Had company deliver it. Park is planting all the plants, so it's looking really nice down there now. Hopefully not too much maintenance will be out there every other day kind of watering it though.
Planters.
Yeah, we've got some planters we got ordered to right now. Uh, there's six of them. Be going in, they're probably, they're about five feet wide and three foot tall. We're gonna put some plants in those and kind of cover the village part up of, uh, Village of Twin Oaks out there. Let's see, the back flow valve was actually fixed now, it's all done and it is working, so hopefully no one steals it. Uh, we're planning on having, uh, the park water fountain that's gonna be shut off and just basically eliminated. Waiting on a bid to get that all done.
It's one by the basketball court?
Yeah, it's been waiting for years and finally just, I think we're gonna cap it off, get rid of the water fountain completely, so. Unless anyone wants to keep it around. But, uh, yeah. We've been working on the past couple of weeks, me and Isaiah were, uh, working on the cart, the path on the cart, or the asphalt that was cracking and had an issue, so we're trying to fix any of those issues that were going on. Kind of patching over some of them and eventually we'll put a whole steel coat over a lot of it, I believe, like do the whole thing. But we'll need another guy to do that, so we're kind of working on finding someone for that position as well too. Roof replacement, uh, insurance claim. Glad that got approved and we can actually start moving forward on that tomorrow. I'll call Martin and Sons and get that ball rolling. I think the pump did get installed in the past month. I think it was just recently, not too recently, but yeah, that's going and everyone in the community, I think, has said something about it running, so it's still going and it's good to go, so. And that's really all I have.
Any more information about the lady that drove into the park?
Which one? Now we've had two, yeah.
We're gonna have to keep that gate closed.
All the way back by the Autumn Leaf, somebody walked, drove all the way back there.
You got panels.
What were they doing?
It got stuck.
Good.
Trying to find where to park apparently. Yeah.
Some lady called and.
Yeah.
She on the, on the pathway?
She would have to get back there.
Yeah.
We have to drive down the pathway.
She was very apologetic though whenever we got to her.
Yeah, two different cars did this.
I had Isaiah, I had Isaiah just, I was like, can you just leave her out of here?
Well, the gate was open, she was able to walk in.
And he took her with the side by side, let her out so that she didn't hit anyone, so.
Hopefully there weren't any kids on the playground?
Oh, there were kids.
Should we trip the bound her car all the way out?
No, she was able to pull it out, but, yeah, I mean, we had the asphalt stuff going on, so she kind of got stuck in a pinched in an area and we're like, I took a field back a piece and let her drive off. We're good.
Yeah.
Look, close the gate.
It's always exciting.
We may need another sign or something.
Yeah, I don't know.
There's already two or three.
I don't think a sign would stop.
No.
There's no help.
Or maybe the thing that like pops up out of the asphalt, yeah.
Spikes.
Oh, the little bollard things?
Yeah.
Right.
There you go.
That's all I have. Well, unless, uh, I don't know, were you bringing up the trailer thing?
Um, they saw it on the bills list, I think, but if you had any questions about what the trailer was, Jake found a really great trailer to replace the one that we had.
Found a little trailer that we're gonna replace the other one with. Grab it tomorrow so we can haul stuff.
Yeah.
Rocks, all that good stuff.
Okay.
Thanks, Walt.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you, guys.
City clerk report.
Okay, I promise I'm gonna be really brief. I'm only gonna talk about, uh, two things, so big projects that are going on. So if you haven't been down to the park yet, the boring started today with the lighting contractor, so, um, they've got big holes open but they've done a really good job of snow fencing everything and, uh, that's supposed to be done by Friday. So they'll be boring tomorrow morning starting at eight AM and then, uh, pouring the concrete bases for the poles on Friday. So that is moving right along. And then if that all gets done this week, they'll be installing the poles next week. So that's very exciting. And the, uh, I just talked to the contractor today, actually, from the Bolley entrance. So I hope everybody has seen my notifications that I've been sending out about the traffic plan. So that is going to start on Tuesday, so they will be closing the roadway, they have their permit from St. Louis County to shut down one lane at Big Bend. That will happen Tuesday morning at eight AM. So the day after Memorial Day is when they'll start. So, um, we are starting with the east entrance and that is by design, if anybody has a question about why that is. Because we all felt like it was going to be safer to have that one closed first when people are coming in. Because it would be much easier to have two cars accidentally meeting on Bolley than it would be somebody trying to turn into a closed entrance and getting stuck in the middle of Big Bend sideways. So that was the idea behind having it east entrance closed first and they will do that. It will take about seven days for pure time, so it'll be closed during that time. You'll be one in and one out on the west side and then after it's cured and they can reopen it, then they'll start on the other side.
And during the day, at least in those first couple of days, we are gonna have someone kind of like, hi.
Yes, they have traffic control in their plans, there will be message boards along Big Bend as well because of the lane closure. Um, it's my understanding that the Big Bend lane will only be closed when they are actively working there, so they will open it back up when like when it's curing, but when they have workers actively there, saw cutting pavement, that sort of thing, then, um, that lane will be closed. So, but yes, we will have traffic control out, they know that they have to include that message boards. There will be flaggers, someone will still probably try to drive through barricades, but we're gonna try to minimize that as much as possible. So please do tell your neighbors as you're talking to people, make sure, I will send out more emails, but I know not everybody gets email. It's on the website, if they have questions about it, they can call. But I just don't want anybody to be completely surprised, though I know there will be some people who are, but we're gonna try to minimize that as much as possible, so. And the new shirts came in. Jake, stand up and model our new shirts. So these are the new staff shirts. So for those, we were gonna do a different color for the Alderman, but I think you've decided you like the Navy. Okay, so anybody who needs a new shirt, who doesn't have one, I'm looking at you, new Alderman, and you probably too. Let me know your shirt size tonight before you leave and I will get more shirts ordered for polo shirts like that for the rest of the board, if you will. So that's it, unless anybody has questions for me.
Okay. All right, uh, I will be the first to announce that we have preliminary approval for Merrimack Station Grant. And I think if you remember, that's gonna be about two point two million dollars.
Grant or the project?
The project.
The project.
The grant is one point eight.
The grant is one point eight and our contribution is four hundred thousand. It's a ninth, it's a, it's a two thousand and twenty-eight project, so it's, it's out of ways. So we're going for the four hundred thousand contribution, we're gonna be stuffing away some money out of our capital budget every year or so that when we get to the, uh, project time, that board will have an escrow account that has that money in it, so that was good news.
Did that include lighting?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And these are federal dollars, so they said, don't break out the champagne just yet because of the federal climate, so keep that in mind.
You know, the guy with, the guy with the chainsaw, be careful.
Yeah, right, let us hope that we will still have that money available.
Uh, the other thing. Uh, the other thing is, uh, there was a recommendation from, uh, one of the condominium, uh, residents that I thought was a pretty good idea. He said, uh, do you think we could have the fire department put together a little session so that we can learn how to properly use and maintain fire extinguishers? I thought, man, that's a pretty good idea. So I carried it a little bit further and I contacted the chief and I said, how do you guys feel about preparing a session? A public session on disaster preparedness? And what we can do before and after and so forth and include fire extinguishers and when to use them and all that stuff. So he has agreed to do that. Uh, I said, would be best if we do it at City Hall or do you want to show off the nice meeting room over at the fire department? He said, I'll get back to you on that and they'll get back to me on the date and the timing of all this. So I thought that would be a good thing to do. Okay, uh, alderman comments, Lisa?
I have nothing other than that I've messed up your plans for whatever date. I'll get you the date.
That's okay.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll figure it out.
Jim?
Um, no sir. I don't have anything.
Jim?
Not tonight.
Joe?
Uh, two items. Number one, the, um, the drain off of the, uh, low roof over here. Do we have a plan to do anything with that?
You have any engineering ideas?
A few. I don't know that they're gonna look good.
Well, it, it definitely is, it definitely is not a proper way to get water off of this roof. I agree.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'd be, be willing to, uh, hear your ideas. Yep.
Uh, let me come up with something.
Okay.
Uh, and then, uh, the second item is, um, really to, to Bob and Karen that I don't live next to it. So frustration probably isn't at your level. Um, but I drive by it every day, multiple times a day. Super frustrated by that. It's not just on that side, but you, I see it on the other side. So you're getting it from both sides. Um, and I think this is something that's been building up for several years. There's been, there's been items on the other side, on the, on the Golden Oak side that are clearly outside the regulations. We didn't do anything about it. Um, and so we're, we make these, these regulations, but we don't have any authority apparently to do anything about it. So why are we making the regulations? Who has the authority? Um, the county has the authority. Then they should be making the, I, I don't know what we're doing here. If we can't do anything about it, then.
Yeah.
Why do we have everything on, on our website that says, these are the rules that we live by in the city? I know things are happening, but I don't know that that helps them.
Thank you.
It's gotta happen.
It works. I appreciate it.
We see it on the news here about the rule of law. It's up in the air nationally.
That particular process is a, it just irritates me.
Me too.
May I ask a question now?
Sure.
I don't, I, I know you have certain rules.
That's all right.
Do you, would you like me as a private citizen to call the county? I, I mean, if you give me a name and a number, I'm happy to do that. I got it. I talked to Tim Beaver, which I had a little trouble just.
Um, I, well, Paula knows him. He actually does, um, home occupancy inspections. So, you know, again, it's, I don't know that the people that we work with are the people that they, they're not the ones who field public phone calls. So the, the person that I'm in touch with is not the person that if you are a resident and want to make a complaint to the county, he was, he's not the guy answering the phone. So I don't, you know, what we are not clear on, and I think it's always been a struggle for us as a city, how to handle code enforcement. If we outsource it, you know, we try to take it away from the people that live here in the city to not have to code enforce on their neighbors and their friends. Necessarily the board, the staff. That was the idea years ago when Frank was here, you know, even when Kathy was here, how do we handle this? We've talked about it for many, many years. So the idea was to try to outsource it to county and let them and in their expertise in code enforcement, do it for us. But clearly it is not working as efficiently as we would like it to, as the board would like it to. And there are, you know, many, many steps that we have to follow as a city to be able to get any kind of teeth on anything.
I understand and I understand. We've been running in circles trying to get this fixed.
Yeah.
But I don't understand why other municipalities seem to be able to get it done and we don't. So that'll be my last word on that.
We've been here twenty-two years. First eighteen were cop aesthetic. Everything worked like a well greased machine. Minor stuff. And maybe that's because Karen and I took care of one of the gardens down in the park. It was so bad. But, uh, we're, you know, just look at somebody to help navigate that, that maze full of greased pigs. We're gonna be able to catch one that has the accountability of nailing somebody down and say, here is the problem. As in depth as you need to do it. Now give me a name.
If you need us to call someone at the, at the county, we're happy to do that. If you think, uh, citizen input would be beneficial.
I think my understanding is the process is in place right now.
Yep.
And, uh, we, there are, you know, when they, when they give them violations and they give them notifications. My understanding is there's been eight violations written on that property. And there are grace periods and time periods where they have to do certain things. And then if they're not done, I think then they're, they go to court basically. So I think where he is right now, first of all, you can't go into a property without some form, form of a development plan. That's properly the way it should be done. You should have a development plan which shows what grading is gonna be done, et cetera, et cetera. He bought the property, went out there and started doing everything, didn't have any of that covered. Okay? So I think he's, he's in the process now or should be in the process of having to hire an engineering firm. Uh, which is gonna be part of the requirements the county is putting on him now and a bunch of other requirements. We know there were some fences put in that shouldn't have been put in. But the best I can say is we're moving it as fast as we can. And there's, we just have to let that timeframe run out. Then he goes to court and the judge makes the decision.
I understand that completely. I really do. And that's why you've not heard from us until now.
Yeah.
But the appearance has become so terrible. It's just, it's just gotten to the point, and, and I think there's a lot of help. April will verify this. There is a cable tied to a tree tied to his fence so it doesn't fall down.
Yeah.
Now, how can that be safe? You know, kids go back there and play.
The tree from all my barber type of college indicate that the tree was suffocated and buried. Too much of the trough was, uh, buried. Therefore, cutting it, that kills the tree.
We're getting into it again and I, I need to get into the history of it. It was not my intention. I simply wanted to address this situation and I think we've done that.
You guys have provided more structure and commitment to this from running down that greased pig.
Yeah.
He's so eloquent, isn't he?
Well, I appreciate you coming to the meeting. I appreciate you having the opportunity to tell us about your frustration. I think we understand that. I think we share a lot of that frustration and we're trying to work through this so that we have a happy outcome here. It, it is taking much longer than what any of us would have wanted.
Paul asked me if I was gonna buy the property. That won't be happening.
Karen, I think, you know, we're not waiting for this guy to be a good neighbor. Yeah. You know, he's not going to be.
You're right.
It doesn't matter what we do. He's not gonna be a good neighbor between Oaks. He just flat don't care. It's obvious. And they, I think we need to, to, to make an example, you know?
I agree with that.
Aside from cutting the grass, what, what can we do with this? I mean, the damage is kind of done, isn't it?
That's exactly right.
Right.
And it, and it should never have occurred. I, see, I'm getting the history. I didn't need to. I talked to Frank, I don't know how many times, and tried to explain situations to him. And what did Frank do? He put him on a committee. Now, you know, this guy was bad news from, from the get-go. I was trying not to be too negative. And I understand what Frank was trying to do, but it doesn't work.
Yeah.
Just doesn't work. I'm done now. I've said that three times now. I really am.
And if you want to citizen the call, I want Karen to make the call. I'll do that favor.
The problem with making the call is most likely it's, it's not gonna be the, the right person. I know in dealing with the property, sometimes I call or April calls, well, you need to talk to the health department. Okay. So then we'll call the health department. Well, there was a violation written on this property. They don't have any copies of the violation. They don't know anything about it. They go out, they say, okay, well, we're gonna do this. Then, then you have another, you know, trying to weed around and find the right people.
I get that.
Yeah.
That's very same thing. I, I mean, we all know what it's like.
Yeah.
But I'm glad we came tonight. I thank you again for your time.
Think the good news is I think we have it under control. The process is working right now. Let's just hope it gets to the end real quick.
But I did hear you say earlier that we can do something about the grass.
The weeds.
Like, yes, grass or weeds, doesn't matter, but we can take care of that, right? We can go down that in a shorter timeframe than whatever.
We can issue him a letter, a notice. That does not mean that he will go out and do anything about it. And then we have to go down the same road that we went down with the trash. So that could be.
Sorry.
Because we have to issue the notice and then we have to issue violation.
Thanks for coming.
And then we have to.
Thank you.
Put it on the court docket. And then we have to.
I still think we need to do it.
Let the judge do that. So, I mean, I'm, I can certainly issue a letter.
I think that we, he's not, he's gonna continue to do it. So I think we have to, I think we have to come from this every angle that we can, and this is one that's under our control.
Also, Pete from Iowa, if any of you have questions about greased pigs, I'd be happy with that.
About what?
Grease pigs.
All right. Well, that finishes, uh, final citizen comments. Uh, we are to adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Favor?
Hi.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.